Trustee Lawrence?
Here.
Trustee Lawler?
Here.
Trustee Leiblat? Not here yet. Trustee Healy? Not here yet. Trustee Katsinas?
Here.
Trustee Milani?
Here.
Mayor Dodge?
Here.
We have a quorum. Time is 6:01. Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of the October 6, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meetings.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting, of the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole of October 6, 2025.
Second.
So motion and second on the minutes, or any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Here.
Aye. Oh, I mean. Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Milani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Passes.
Do you want to, is this for a specific item or no?
No.
We'll do it later.
What's he saying? Why does, no, this is...
All right, we have a person who signed in, but we'll take that later. It's not for a specific agenda item on tonight's agenda, so we'll take that comment later. Next item, please.
Okay. Items for separate action, introducing, introduction of Therapy Dog Holly.
Okay, George, chief. That's dressed up for this, chief.
Mayor, Village Board, just want to say thank you for allowing us to continue our therapy dog program. Tonight I want to introduce Holly and Officer Prizlikie, who will be the handler. Holly came from us, from the Cook County Tales of Redemption. They've been working with Officer Prizlikie today in the Ranger of the Week. Holly's a new addition to the police department. We're excited to have her here, not only for the police department, but for our staff, for the village. It's a great asset and we're very excited. So with that, I'm gonna pin Holly and turn it over to Gordon of the mayor.
Does she know we're gonna pin this? All right, is she official?
Official.
All right.[500.36][500.36](applause). Look.
(mumbling).
Did it work?
Chief, is there anything else you want to add about the therapy dog? Yeah, any plans or just want to mention or want to thank Cook County?
All right, grab a microphone, chief, if you could.
Again, I just want to say thank you to Cook County for this opportunity to have Holly join not only in the police department, but the village. And again, not only for the police department, but she'll be utilized throughout the village schools, village staff, the police department staff, village staff. So very excited to have her onboard. So again, thank you to the county.
All right, I think the plan is for us to go treat ourselves and Holly, so we'll take a motion for a short recess. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for recess. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Milani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Oh.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye. We'll see you out in the lobby. Call the meeting order. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Here.
Trustee Lawler?
Here.
Trustee Leiblat?
Here.
Trustee Healy? Not here. Trustee Katsinas?
Here.
Trustee Milani?
Here.
Mayor Dodge?
Here.
I'd like to note that the time is now 6:25. Then we are resuming the meeting. This time we'll proceed to Network Security Monitoring Services.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee, Lawrence?
I move to recommend to the Village Board to approve the waiver of the competitive bid process in favor of entering into a contract with a sole source vendor for a term of three years plus two optional years with Computer Aid Incorporated, L M N T R I X, and authorize the execution of a professional services agreement between the Village of Orland Park and Computer Aid, Inc., for an annual not-to-exceed cost for the years 2026, 2027, and 2028 of $235,911.85 and a total three-year contract cost not to exceed $707,735.55, and for two optional years covering years 2029 and 2030, and a not-to-exceed board-approved budget amount, and approve authorizing the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
Could we just have Ted briefly explain what this system does and why we're not seeking another vendor?
Okay. So this is our managed detection and response system and security oversight. We did a competitive bid process three years ago for this service. This system came, they came in as the winning bid three years ago. The cost of switching is quite high, and they did not raise their price from three years ago through the five-year contract, except that we did add additional services for this contract. So if we kept the contract the same, it would have actually been the same price we got three years ago. So on software, that's really unheard of, that they kept their, their contracts right. They, they like to focus on governments, and so, like Metro uses them, a lot of other local governments use them because of their affordability and what they provide. And then the cost to switch is quite high and would take us quite some time to implement. So when you have a system that's working well and they're holding the price steady, we felt that would be best just to keep with the...
So they're holding it... So they're holding that same price for the next three years, correct?
Next five years.
Next five.
So three years, and they've said that they will hold it for the optional two if we decide to continue on.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? For the record, I'd like to note in case residents or anyone else is interested, the Village Board documentation did explain, outline, and put in detail the things that Ted just told us. So just so you know, we did note that.
We're obviously comfortable with the quality of this firm, given the needs, correct?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Leiblatt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Schuschler Park Inclusive Playground, RFP number 25-058, construction award.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani?
Move to recommend to the Village Board to approve the execution of a contractor agreement between the Village of Orland Park and GLI Services Incorporated, Juliet, Illinois, as the qualified responsive proposal for RFP number 25-058, Schuschler Park Inclusive Playground Construction for a cost of $647,560.1, plus a 10% contingency of $64,756, for a total not-to-exceed contract price of $712,316.1, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to Village Attorney Review, and authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani?
It's good to see this project moving towards construction. This is something that we've been waiting for for quite some time, and the village as well, so happy to see this go through.
Okay. No other comments or questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Leiblatt?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Care Solus Mental Health Services Community Platform.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leiblatt.
I move to recommend the Village Board partnering with Care Solus on a three-year trial basis beginning immediately in 2025, and approaching the Orland Township, the Orland Park Library, the Orland Fire Protection District, and School District 135 to solicit their participation in the community-wide program, and authorize the village manager to execute all related documents subject to Village Attorney Review.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the item? George, you want to, is there a presentation?
Yeah.
Yes. Good evening. So tonight, we're here to present an opportunity for the village. As you probably already know, every community and demographic faces mental health challenges. And while we may occasionally hear a story or two on this topic in the news or online, so much more of that goes unreported. For individuals and families seeking assistance, the path to finding assistance can be challenging. It may take multiple phone calls to find an available provider who can meet each person's unique needs. So what Care Solus does is they are really a hub of information for both mental health and social services within a community. Last year, the unique nature of this offering was recognized by the U.S. Conference of Mayors, excuse me, as a best practice. So what Care Solus does currently is they serve thousands of communities, especially school districts, businesses, and universities across the United States. Through online tools, they help people connect directly with the support they need. And this is something that's available 24/7, 365, and they're also able to accommodate their services in over 200 languages. So by partnering with Care Solus, communities are able to provide their residents with free access to a very large network of local providers for these services. Residents can use the service either by phone or text with a care companion, a live person, or they can anonymously use the online tool through their Care Match self-serve tool in order to find the specific providers that they need. So currently, Care Solus already has a significant footprint within Illinois. They are currently partnering with 25 school districts, and there is nearly half a million individuals which have access to this service. So if the village were to partner with Care Solus, all residents, students, businesses, village employees would be able to utilize this service. Care Solus has nearly 300 providers in the Orland Park area and thousands more throughout Cook County and the state of Illinois. So what does this service cost? What they ask for is $1 per resident per year. So for us, that's approximately $58,000. We do know that the opioid settlement funds that we have been receiving for several years now may be used to offset the cost of these services. So to date, we, the village has received over $64,000 in these settlement funds. And over the next 13 years, we anticipate getting approximately $87,000. So of course, you know, the annual amount may not be able to cover the full cost for a year, so we could pursue other grant opportunities, and of course, look to partner with some of our neighboring jurisdictions, such as the Township, Library, Fire District, and District 135. Lastly, what I'd like to say is, this type of service, I think, very well complements kind of the vision and the mission of the Village of Orland Park. For example, the vision statement for the village says that "We are innovative community that is committed to building strong families and strong businesses." And our mission statement calls for enhancing the quality of life to those who live, work, and visit Orland Park. So at this point, staff is recommending this three-year trial period for the service. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor? Trustee Lawler?
So they're just a middleman, right?
Correct.
So if someone, they handle addiction, mental health. Now, if someone were to call from the village, they were having an issue with, let's say, a neighbor or somebody they suspected, would they be able to get counseling on that as well?
Counseling about a neighbor who had an issue?
Well, you know, someone they recognize might be having a mental health crisis, and they don't know what to do.
Okay. I don't think that you can recommend people for the service. Certainly, what the village and others within the community can do is to make this widely known as a resource.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leiblatt.
I just want to comment, I think that this is, it's just outstanding to make these kinds of resources available because I think that when people know where they are, they will use them. And I think this, in conjunction with our police department that has excellent training in crisis intervention, and has also partnered with another agency that provides support, this, you know, is just a broader scope, level of support for our residents and an opportunity for people to, on their own, just, you know, and this gives somebody the opportunity, and correct me if I'm wrong, somebody's just, you know, it doesn't have to be somebody like standing on a ledge. It could be somebody who's just having a really overwhelming time in their life, and they need a little support. They call this number, and they can get connected to somebody who can meet with them virtually.
Correct.
Or in person.
Well, over the phone, a live person over the phone, or by text, correct.
Yeah, so this is a wonderful opportunity for someone to get a little support when they need it, regardless of how great or small the need is. So I think it's excellent. And I also really think it's great that we have funds that will cover a greater, a significant amount of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I have a question. How will we assess whether this program is doing for us in our community what we think it should be doing?
So information can be shared with the village regarding usage. It's not going to speak to any personal demographic, you know, identifiable information, no names. I think, you know, what we'll, what we'll see is, you know, the number of folks that may contact and seek assistance. Okay, so we're talking about just a head count. We would not receive any identifiable information like addresses, names, or anything else like that.
And so there would be nothing beyond a head count? Would there be any other, just general, understanding of the type of services or whether there's a shortage in some way? That the need isn't satisfied, a person calls, and it's unsuccessful in getting what the sort of service that person needs?
Yeah, I don't believe they're able to provide any, you know, conclusionary, you know, identify, you know, numbers associated with a particular conclusion. Perhaps I can look into whether or not they would identify whether this is a drug issue or homelessness issue, or some other types of, you know, mental health issues. They might be able to say, you know, on an aggregate level, you know, you had 10 people seeking homeless assistance.
Okay, and so then, say, maybe at the end of the first year, we might be assessing it, and what would we say success looks like?
Well, I think success could be identified probably best over a couple of years. I think that's why we're looking at three years, is because we're going to be able to benchmark, you know, year one, year two. Obviously, at this point, we really don't know, you know, what to expect, you know, because this is the first time a service like this has been offered. But I think we, over time, can see, you know, what kind of utilization there is. But I will say that, you know, the village, and if we have partners, you know, we'll need to do our best to get the word out, so that awareness is there.
That makes sense, and I like the idea of how it is potentially a direct connection to any of local resources, because obviously, it's easier when something's closer by. But then in addition, if there's some specialty resource, or maybe it's a location that's near someone's work. You know, they live here, but maybe they work in whatever, Oakbrook. If it was near Oakbrook, that might suit them better for their schedule, so that's very interesting, too. Thank you.
Right, yeah, they would be able to identify, you know, the best locations for the caregivers.
Jim, my questions are, have we, should we add 230 to the list to at least keep them updated and informed that we're going forward with the program?
Yes, we certainly can.
Okay, and then, this is a three-year trial, so we'll figure out the finances for next year because we've gotten the grant money that we'll pay for this year, correct? Or for some, the first contract, and we'll get future revenues, but this will be some impact to the budget, but it could be very well...
Right, so it's very...
Eighty-seven is over 13 years.
Correct.
Okay.
So just a very good point that you raise. So we're asking for this to begin immediately.
Yep.
So that's part of the recommendation.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I think there's a motion and a second, correct? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Leiblatt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
CPAC Membership and Daily Fees.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
I move to recommend the Village Board to approve increasing, try again. I move to recommend to the Village Board to approve increasing Centennial Park Aquatic Center membership, daily admission, and guest pass fees for the 2026 season as referenced below.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions about the item? Or do we have a staff presentation?
There's no presentation on this one.
Oh, no. John?
Yeah, absolutely. So the last time we increased pool memberships was in 2023. Last year, our attendance was over 87,000, and with the continuation of wage increases since the first minimum wage increase back in 2013, and now additional increases through 15, and additional costs for supplies and services, we were anticipating a more expensive season next year, and we're just trying to offset those costs. So the increases are pretty modest. They're in line with other pools that are comparable in size and features, so we thought this would be a good opportunity to increase the fees, just in a modest way.
Any comments or questions? These seem pretty modest to me. There's a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Leiblatt?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Community Solar Discussion for Discussion Only.
So Mayor, Village Board, we have Adam Hoover here with NYMEC. So there's, Adam's here for the next two items. The first one is the Community Solar Discussion, and then the next one after that is the Municipal Aggregation Program. As the Board may recall, in past years, the village has taken part in the municipal aggregation program. Saved a lot of money for residents. Last couple of years, we have not been part of that because the, just the money saving hasn't been there. So Adam's here to kind of talk about those two programs, and really, we're seeking direction from the Board on whether to proceed or not.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leiblatt?
Just quickly, this is what we're looking into here is an opportunity for savings directly to the residents of Orland Park on their, on their electricity, essentially. That's what we're doing?
Incorrect. Well, I can get to that, incorrect is a short answer.
Okay, well, good.
Yeah, I wish the answer was yes. Trust me more than anything, I wish the answer was yes, but I will get to that in a second, so. My name's Adam Hoover. Let's see if I can get this woman. I'm with NYMEC. I can't get them. Oh, there we go, perfect. The first thing is that we do, I just want to give a quick review of what NYMEC does. We've been working with the village for over 10-plus years. Some of you may recognize my father, David Hoover, used to come and present. He's golfing now and watching the grandkids more, so. So I'm here. "We help with your power." "We are a broker," is probably the shortest answer of what we do. And the one thing we do differently is instead of Orland Park going to bid out on its own, we go to bid with 140-plus other municipalities in Illinois. So currently, you have a rate of 8.5 cents. That's about $80,000 of savings compared to the COMED rate annually. But just to put it in, just the perspective, the COMED rate is nine cents. We used to have a rate of six cents, and in the last couple of years, the rate has gone up to eight and a half cents. So that's a $180,000 increase in your budget, so we are aware of that. So we have a couple of options to help reduce those costs. I'll just give you a quick review of the COMED market here. Not just telling you power's rising. I'll go over the, the big two reasons are AI demand, if you know data centers, electric vehicles, pretty much demand is outweighing supply by a drastic measure. So that's why it's happening. So we have an option and opportunity to reduce costs. There is a new program in Illinois called Community Solar. It is a state-funded, state-subsidized program that would allow for the village to receive 10% off, and you would not, I'm not asking to install solar panels anywhere in Orland Park. No physical solar panel installation anywhere. So you receive 10% off. For you all, that's around $60,000 a year, and to be honest, I think that's a little conservative number, but before we delve deeper, I just want to give you a rough estimate of what those savings would be a year. There is no physical installation, and it's a state-funded program. There will be no cost to you. We'll never ask for a check. We'll never ask for anything from the village. I just, before I move on, this might answer your question, Trustee. I recommend residents sign up for this, whether it's with some of our developers or their own. I would recommend residents to look into this because they can receive 10% savings as well. They might even receive 15%.
So it is a money save, we're doing this because it's going to be a money saver for residents?
This, we're talking about the village accounts.
Okay.
I cannot, here's a short answer to that. I would knock on doors and tell every resident to run this program, but we can't, I don't know how to advertise this in a way that would encourage residents to sign up. And we have some ideas, but in short, right now, what we're proposing is we want to put the village accounts on Community Solar. I'm personally saying, we should get residents to sign up for it, but how do you do that as an easier said-than-done, you know, task? Yep. And so I just wanted to go, I just missed, there we go. I just want to go through a couple of the contract terms, and I'll just be very upfront. These are kind of the roadblocks that we have with a lot of our municipalities. If you wanted to move forward, we do not have a contract with you, and honestly, if you signed a contract tomorrow, I don't think we'd get savings till 2026 or 2027. There's a long waitlist going on, just to be clear. But if you did sign up, there would likely be a 15- to 20-year contract term. Pretty much what our developers were doing is they're saying, hey, we want to match the lifespan of the solar farms out in rural Illinois. You kind of are renting solar panels out in Marengo or Beecher, some of the places we have them. And so you're kind of renting those solar panels, and so you have to have a contract that matches the life of that, that solar panel. So that's about a 15- or 20-year term. There is an early termination fee. It's about one year... Uh, it's about one-year savings. So if you're in the program for two years and you save $120,000, if you did terminate your contract for whatever reason, uh, it would be $60,000 of cost, but you would still come out with $60,000. We don't, we don't have any towns that we know, we don't have any, you know, municipalities we work with that have actually used that termination fee and, and actually have enacted it. And also, I'll just say this, if you do use a termination fee, NYMEC would do its best to find a replacement, which would waive it. Uh, and then for billing, your billing might have to go from, right now, you're currently billed by Dynegy, and you just kind of get one bill. Samantha in Public Works is really helpful with this, but you may have to switch to dual billing and get billed by ComEd. Those are kind of the three big, that's right, where drawbacks are, are roadblocks in this program. So I'll answer any questions you guys have, but I think the, the staff and I are looking is, do you want NYMEC to go to bid on your behalf and present a final contract to the board?
So I, just a, Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leibler?
Um, so you're saying that it would be just about, so what would the approximate annual savings be for the village?
$60,000.
About, we'd be, save about $60,000 a year, so we'd be spending $60,000 a year less than what we're spending now?
Correct, yes, yes, yeah. On your ComEd bill.
For the village.
On the village accounts, not residential, not residential at all.
So like, residents could sign up, that's separate?
I don't know how we get residents to sign up, but I would encourage every resident here to look at Community Solar. It's a good program.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Trustee Lawler?
Mr. Mayor? So, if, if it was this simple, why isn't everybody signing up for this?
Uh, they are, they are. Uh, I wish I could say you sign up today and you would get savings tomorrow. But, uh, there's a waitlist. There's a waitlist to get availability. So we don't have enough solar farms for the amount of demand that we have. So that's the biggest issue. There's also confusion in how do you kind of, it's kind of word of mouth, and how do you get people to know about it? They didn't roll it out really well, ComEd in particular. I could bore you with details if you really wanted, but the first two years, residents have had the ability to access this program for probably three or four years now. My house, where I signed up, I, I got 20% off, and now the savings are down to 10. And my guess is in five years, it'll be five, and 10 years will be mandatory. The first two years were a couple hiccups with ComEd. I'll just leave it at that, and I can answer those questions if you want. But, um, those would be my two short answers for you.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
Explain to us how it is that you guarantee for each of these years that we save 10% over the ComEd rate?
Uh, it's just a contractual amount. I think, is that, kind of, I, I hope this answers your question. It's a contract that says, pretty much, these solar, are you kind of saying, how do we get this, how is this possible? Is that?
No, I'm talking about the amount that we're going to save because electricity prices fluctuate, energy prices. Now, you gave us, you showed us numbers about capacity, not energy. So first of all, we're starting, something's getting confused here.
So here's a short answer to your question. If the ComEd rate goes up, then that's $60,000 of savings, goes to $65,000, $70,000. If the ComEd rate goes down, it goes down to 55 or 50,000, but we don't anticipate the ComEd rate to go down. But it's, it's 10% off of your bill with the estimated savings of 60,000.
Okay, and, and the rate on the delivery charge? Meaning the energy and delivery charge?
It includes supply as well, as if you can get it all in one bill. So in short, if you can get it into one bill, which we can, uh, it would include the supply as well as the delivery.
Any other comments or questions? George, what would be, what would be the, um, the cycle time? If you're going to go out and potentially bid on this, when would we know and what would be the process for us to say, accept or not accept?
Yeah, oh, that, I would, I would say, if you let me go to bid today, you know, you guys say, hey, we're very, very interested, interested, I would go to bid, and I'd say in a month or so, I could present a final contract to you with these terms.
And then?
And then savings probably in late 2026 would be my guess. That's, that's kind of the million-dollar question, but I would just want to put late 2026 as, as something where I think savings would start.
No, I appreciate that, because it, um, I got, I'll, just speaking as myself, I have mixed feelings. And, um, don't mind the idea of, of testing this as an idea. Don't want to put you through a whole bunch of work, but I'd set this as a coin toss probability that I'd say yes.
Okay.
So it's a 50-50.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, and, um, and it's, it's just the, um, the power, the energy markets are a mess right now because of the grid, the demand, the unanticipated demand, the explode, the hole shot.
Correct.
Let alone emerging technologies. And if there's any one thing that catches my eye the most, is 60 grand seems like an interesting savings to the village of Orland Park. Check. In three years, right, it may be, those savings may disappear. They may get larger, you know, the energy markets could change where this. So I just, I'm just trying to be mindful of how long we have to be in this program to then get an expected return, given that 60 grand would be my out fee.
Oh, I see. I understand your concern. First of all, I don't know why you, let's say, let's say the ComEd rate drops, it's currently in about nine cents right now. Let's say it drops to six cents. Well, then your savings might go down to $40,000 a year.
Still savings.
Still savings. You'll never owe a cent. You'll never, it is a line item on a bill. I could show you a couple of bills right now, uh, and it's just a line item on a bill. So in that early termination fee, let's say the savings don't become that, you know, that 50, 60,000, 60,000 I, I projected. Let's say it goes down to 40. You're still saving $40,000 on just a line item on the bill. And so, I, I, I don't want to, between me and you, I just don't know why anyone would terminate a contract.
Right, and that's, you know, and that's, and thank you, right? And you've been fair about what the, the cost of an exit would, would, would take. Look, so I, I personally, for the board, I personally don't have a problem with them going out to a bid, let's see what it comes back with, and let's, it's always about the terms and conditions.
And that's, that's why I'm here. I don't, you know, I've done this a couple of times, and, and I presented final contracts. Well, our developers are kind of frustrated where the board doesn't execute. So I'm giving you the roadblocks now.
No, 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 I, I, I get it, because they've got capital expenses, and I get that you're trying to align as securely as possible their revenue to their capital.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
But this guy's here, our lawyer, because, you know, what the big print giveth, the small print take it away.
I understand, I understand that.
So let's see what the contract looks like.
Yeah, I should really be talking to a lawyer, right?
Yeah, there you go. So like I said, I, just saying for the board, I don't have a problem with them exploring this, and let's, let's see what it looks like. That's up to the board.
Mr. Mayor? Just one, one other, um, just a discussion point. So if you have a house that has solar panels, the, um, energy is coming into the house, but if you have, if you're a house with solar panels and you're still connected to ComEd, and you, oh, and you use more electricity than your solar panels provide, your bill is going to be, you're going to be charged for that electricity that you use in addition to whatever the connection fee is. With this, A, we don't have to buy solar panels.
Not touch them.
And B, we, the, you showed us in the beginning what our contract number was going to be, the, I think you said seven point something? I'm, I'm trying.
That's your, yeah, I don't want to bore you with that, but that's just the supply cost. That doesn't guarantee that for the future or the past, but yes.
Right, but we're, it's more of a fixed number, right? Like, we, we don't, we're not going to go over the amount of energy produced and then end up.
Correct, correct.
Right, so we know, we're always going to know how much in general.
That's what NYMEC does primarily. That's our number-one service to you, we believe, is, is, is providing that fixed rate at a lower cost than the ComEd rate.
So we'll, yeah, it's a fixed rate.
You can still participate that and participate in Community Solar, which is kind of, we, we kind of believe it's a no-brainer.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
Is the contract with your company or, so it's with the solar farm developer?
Correct.
So if something happens with the solar farm developer's property, I don't know, hailstorm and tornado, whatever, what then?
So two options, that depends on each developer, so that's part of the things that I do, is go out to bid for that. But the two things we've really seen is, one, in that hypothetical situation and the, it gets washed out and doesn't work anymore, the, the savings would pause, and they would be responsible to build, you know, a new one, and you guys would have savings in that one. More likely is that you guys would be transferred over to another solar farm, which once again, doesn't impact you all, since it's not a solar farm in Orland Park, but that would, they would find another solar farm for your availability at the, at the guaranteed rate of 10%.
And provided that there is a solar farm available to be recontracted to someone else, that they're not already under contract for their power output.
Any other comments or questions? George, what do you need in terms of direction?
If, if the board, if they're.
Need a quick consensus, I mean, what do you prefer?
I think a consensus would work, and then we have to bring a contract back. Anyway, we'd have a, a lot more details at that point.
Just, maybe just go down the road. Trustee, uh, Lawler, any issues with moving forward to at least bid this out? Trustee Lawrence?
I think it's probably much more complicated than we understand. I wonder what our legal cost will be just to look at contracts, evaluate, that sort of thing. So that's a real cost of, above and beyond any potential savings. And is this essentially a single-source contract that we haven't looked into further?
So, uh, NYMEC is a, um, like a private, almost a private co-op. They, uh, they aggregate on behalf of municipalities. So that's, that's their business. I'm, I knew, I know, I knew of one other NYMEC-type business. That was 10 years ago. I doubt they're still around. So, uh, if we, if we went on our own, we, we don't have the resources or the, or the bandwidth for that. So, um, and, um, and, and the, the village has a long history of working with NYMEC on aggregation. So in our, um, uh, he mentioned, all of our energy supply that we pay for, village-wide, I should say, for, like, the pump stations, rec, all of that, we do go through NYMEC for aggregation for that. So we get a, um, aggregated amount for the supply. Same thing, you know this, the delivery is fixed, it's set by ComEd, it's, not got by ComEd, by the state and all of that. So this impacts the, um, the village facilities as far as the, the costs are concerned.
Okay, yes, that part was clear to me.
All right, so trustee Lawrence, do you have any issues with them going ahead and bidding, and then we'll see what the contract says later?
So what exactly are we going to do? We're going to go and, we're going to sign a contract with the?
No, we're not signing a contract. He's asking for permission to go out and bid on our behalf.
Yep, present a final contract.
Then we would enter a contract if we like his terms.
Yep.
Exactly it.
This is just a discussion item for direction.
Whether, this is whether we should pursue a contract. It's whether we should pursue a contract.
Okay, so this would be investigating, basically?
Correct.
Okay, I would be okay with that.
All right, trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Go for it.
Trustee Leibler?
Yes.
As well, so there, there's, George, you have what you need in terms of direction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
He's got one more item.
Yep, next item, please.
Okay.
Yep, so.
Call it, please.
Okay, municipal aggregation program.
Uh, so I, uh, we help with the municipal aggregation program. Now, we're going to talk about residents' power. I wish I could provide savings, I'll get to that in a second. The way we originally ran this program, my father was here 10 years ago talking about fixed-rate savings. Hey, the ComEd rate's nine cents, we can find residents a ComEd, uh, sorry, a, a fixed rate of six cents. Residents save $200. That's a no-brainer. Unfortunately, of our 40 towns that are running aggregation programs in Illinois, we cannot find that anymore. We cannot guarantee savings. I could bore you with details, but we cannot save residents' money. So what we're proposing is a program that we actually ran in Orland Park from 2020 to 2022. It's called a fixed-rate aggregation program, price-match aggregation program. Residents would not be able to save against the ComEd rate or pay any extra with the ComEd rate. They would pay the exact same rate as ComEd, as it changed from month to month. They would be billed by ComEd. So if their energy goes out, they would still call ComEd. They'd still have their energy delivered, their bill delivered by ComEd, so virtually no change to residents. So obviously, the next question we always get is, why run the program if we're not saving residents' money? I want to be clear, that's our number-one goal, we can't do that. Well, we have this price-match program that offers you really two options, and kind of three, depends how you look at it. So instead of finding, since we can't find fixed-rate savings, you could either have 10% of your energy become renewable. To put that slightly or shortly, that, that's a significant amount. You guys would be top 10 in the nation in the amount of renewable energy created. I could go into comparables of what that would be. But in short, that's a significant amount of renewable energy, millions of kilowatt-hours. You could forego that and go to option two, which would be a civic contribution. Once again, I'm estimating, uh, this is around $60,000. When we last ran the program, full transparency, in 2020 and 2022, it was around $100,000. Then, and we had to pause the program in 2022, Then, we had to pause the program in 2022, and then '23, we came back and we only offered $12,000. The market kind of died. I don't know, some of you may remember that. And so, we suspended the program, waiting for bigger savings, and we finally have some bigger savings that we think of $60,000 as a substantial amount. And just, if you're curious, there is a option three, which is you could do a combination of renewable energy, 5%, and you can do the $30,000 and mix and match. We could talk and be creative with that. But really, we're here to say, hey, is this something we want to look into, get a final bid, and then, once again, present a final contract to the board, probably a little bit sooner and probably two or three weeks from now. So, I.
Mr. Ray, or?
Trustee Leeflad?
Yeah. Can you go back?
Yes, of course.
To that one previous. So, when you talk about, so, option one, and I want you to know, we ask these questions because this is livestreamed and the residents want to know the answers.
I appreciate it.
So, example, so, option number one, 10%, so, somebody could sign up for option number one, and essentially, what they're doing is, nothing changes in terms of their billing, but 10% of their energy comes from a renewable source, which could reduce their bill.
Nope. No reducing bills.
Okay.
No reducing bills. I just want to be very clear with that.
Okay.
I wish the answer is, I wish the answer is yes, but we cannot reduce the bill.
So, what is the benefit of number one?
You would create a significant amount of renewable energy.
Okay. So, that, okay.
That's the short answer.
Okay, that's, okay, cool. And then, number two, annual payment around $60,000. What, who's making that payment to whom?
MC Squared would make a payment. We would go to bid, but most likely, MC Squared would make that payment to the village of Orland Park monthly.
So, $60,000 would be paid to the village?
Correct. Not to residents.
Is, where was?
Not to, it would go to the village.
But, is that in it, like, let's say, so, the village is doing the community solar thing, and then, the public says, I'm going to sign up for number two, and that means that that's additional funds that comes back to the village? Is that how it is?
Correct. One thing, I just want to make sure, and maybe I should have made this more clear, this would be an opt-out program. This was voted by voters in 2012 as a referendum, meaning that if you move forward, we would ask the board to sign one, two, or three, choose one of those options, and then, pretty much, anyone who hasn't made a previous decision would be included into the program and move over to MC Squared as their supplier. So, I just want to go through some of those.
So, their bill would come from MC Squared?
It would still come from ComEd. It would say powered by MC Squared on it.
Okay.
Between me and you, residents don't notice a change because there's just one line on the bill, but, but yes, it is powered by MC Squared, billed by ComEd.
And we're not saying it's going to be MC Squared. It's just an example that we're using right now.
Correct. We do, I'll just tell you this, we do 40 programs right now, all 40 are with MC Squared. We still go to bid, but MC Squared offers the most usually.
Okay. And then, so, and then, number three is, so, is this, is this resident, this is residents signing up for this?
They would be opted into the program.
With the village?
With the.
Okay, understood.
Yep.
So, this isn't like two completely separate programs. This is the one program with the.
The board would choose one, two, or three.
Right. So, you go out, you go out and find us the best contract, and you come back.
Yep.
We get to look it over, we vote on it.
Yep.
And while we're doing all of that, we choose one, two, or three.
Yep.
And then, once we've got it in place, then the residents are invited to join in as well.
The residents would be moved over, and then, in short, letters would go out, and those letters would say, hey, we're, you know, they're going to be like, why are we doing this program? And so, on the letter, we're going to say, no cost to you, no extra cost, no savings, but we're supporting renewable energy. We're creating X amount of renewable, you know, kilowatt-hours of renewable energy. Or, on the letter, we say, hey, we're creating $60,000, which we're using towards the mental health project, or we're using towards park district, whatever, whatever you guys want to use it for.
Okay.
That's, so, the board would make the decision, and that's where the benefit would gain. I want to reiterate, no benefit directly to the residents.
Well, and it is a benefit to the residents to the extent that if the village is getting, let's say, $60,000.
Yep.
In savings, it goes right back into.
Just want to reiterate, no financial savings to the residents.
Right. No, and you know, I appreciate that you're, I appreciate that because nobody wants to think that they found the thing that, especially right now, because everybody's feeling pretty pinched.
Yep.
So, you know, and I appreciate you wanting to be clear and not misleading and being straightforward about what this is, but it is still beneficial because it could, it provides an opportunity.
Correct.
To use money for the benefit of the village that would have just been used to pay bills.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for walking through that with me.
Trustee?
So, knowing a little bit about this, reading up on it, so, solar and renewable energies are still pretty expensive to produce.
Correct.
Which means a lot of them exist because they're subsidized by governments.
Correct.
Correct? So, if we were to force the village residents into a program that say, we're going to commit to 10% renewable, the village is going to save $60,000 maybe, or whatever, but in the end, our government is basically going to subsidize the building of renewable energies, which is going to be expensive. So, how is that going to really, you know?
Yeah.
Be a savings to the taxpayer and the resident?
So, I would say this, I get your question. I get where you're coming from. These solar farms in the Midwest are already created and already up and running, right? And so, there would be no extra cost. It's not like we're asking the government to come in and pitch in the $60,000, you know, to have renewable energy. What I'm pretty much saying is, you could get $60,000 cash, if the board is renewably-focused, hey, we don't want the $60,000, we want to move that towards actually producing renewable energy, that's what you could do instead. If you don't want to, you know, and that would go, a direct contract from MC Squared to a Midwest, you know, EPA green-certified solar farm or wind farm, and it would be in the name of Orland Park. But that's already, that's going to an already-running solar farm or wind farm. So, it is not like you're creating a new one, and it's not like the government is subsidizing it because it's already up and running. So, you're just kind of paying for the production of it with that $60,000, you know, I hate to say paying, but you understand what I'm saying. And I just want to be clear, if you don't support renewable energy here, then choose option two, if you would like.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Quick question, maybe, I don't know if you'll know this or not.
Sure.
But when we participated in this program the last time, I believe we chose option one, didn't we?
I believe you chose option two.
Did we?
I'm pretty confident.
Because I remember.
Actually, you know what? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I believe you guys chose option three, which was a combination of civic contribution and renewable energy.
I feel like I remember us being an EPA green community.
Yes.
For at least one year.
Yes. It was option three. You guys had a civic contribution.
Oh, so, we did both?
You did both.
Okay.
That's, I'll just tell you, that's, it was a better day back then. You guys were getting 100% renewable energy, and you're getting $100,000 plus.
Right. So, now, it's just 10% and.
Yeah. Thanks for making me feel good about this. This is great.
Here's a coupon. Yes. Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. But that's good memory.
Any other comments or questions? So, George, what are you looking for tonight from the board?
Whether to move forward with the municipal aggregation, the one thing, and we've had, we have a history, and it works exactly as Adam has described it. There's still just one bill. The only hiccup, if I may, is the letter.
Yeah.
That goes out. It causes a tremendous amount of confusion, and then, we get inundated, the village hall gets inundated with phone calls. The letter says exactly what Adam said. It says that the village, on your behalf, is moving to this supplier. Let's say it's MC Squared. We're moving to that supplier. And it says, if you don't want that, then you have to opt out, right? So, it causes, it causes confusion when the letters first go out, and we ended up, we end up fielding. I think if we're going to go this route, we would see what it would be for a two, because he will bid for one year, two years, and three years. And if we're going this route, we should go the longer route because we don't want to keep confusing the residents on an annual basis.
I'll just add to that. Completely agreed. My phone number can be on the letter, so residents can call me directly. MC Squared puts their number on there, but I know sometimes you get phone lines, that's not always best. You can have my number there directly. I'll work with the staff as well. I should have mentioned that George is right, those letters do create the confusion, so it's for one week, is it worth the $60,000 civic contribution? The one addition I just want to make is, we've actually done, a new idea to help with that problem is actually create a six-year program with two-year option opt-outs. So, it'd be really a two-year program. I'd come back in two years and say, hey, do you guys want to renew the program? If yes, then you only have to send letters to those that are in the program, which is a much smaller amount, and it helps reduce those that have that. If you want to opt out of the program and don't want to run the program in two years from now, you obviously can get out. So, we were, the short answer is, we're working on ways to make that less of an issue, but the big thing is, you can have my cell phone, and residents can call me directly.
And the one other element is, and Adam mentioned this, if you're at home, if you're already on some type of unique program, like if you're on the ComEd's hourly.
Yep.
Bill, or if you were at the, at the county fair, and they had the, where you bought electricity from Constellation or whoever, where they sent it, sell it directly to the residents, you don't have to do anything. You're going to stay in that program. So, that's why Adam just said that, right now, it's going to all residents, but in the future, if it's a renewal, it's only the people that are part of the program.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leeflad?
So, would you, like, let's say, we, you know, we do it, everything comes out great, the contract's fantastic, would you be willing to do, like, a presentation for residents?
Yes. Whatever you need. I don't know what's best, you know? We know that the letters are the concern. I don't know the best way to address that. I've made videos for towns, I don't think residents want to see my face, but, you know, they probably want to see the dog again. And so, I don't know the best way to communicate this, but yes, I'll do videos, I'll come out and present again, I'll make phone calls, whatever you need me to do. Yeah. I'm with that.
And the same thing, we're just looking for consensus, because what we'll do then is, once, once Adam goes out and goes out to bid on this, and I would assume that we would want to go with option two, the civic contribution, because we would take that money, and then, we would put it into some of our energy efficiency initiatives that we have going on with conversion to LED.
That's great.
Our variable speed pumps, we have so much of that stuff going on. There would be an environmental impact on that. And then, we would come back on a, on a board night, he would have the bid results.
Yep.
That night, we would come here, and then, it's a yea or nay.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
I'm kind of leaning towards option three again, just because I think, one, it kind of gives us a little bit of free advertising, saying, hey, we are thinking about renewable energy, and we are thinking about the environment, and then, we also get a little bit, but I also think we should bring you back, do a video with the dog.
Oh, please, please. I want to pet the dog, but I told you not to pet the dogs.
And then, it'll be good.
Yeah, I'd love it. I'd love it.
But I'm kind of leaning towards three, but I could also lean towards two as well, I think.
Trustee Lawler?
So, just, if we, let's say, chose three, we're basically putting all the residents into a program.
Residents, so, two things I'd say to that. Great point. Residents would have the ability to opt out. So, the, and the letter would be very clear. Once again, any resident can opt out of the program at any point, at any time, without any fee. That's by state law, not just by NYMEC standards. And so, yes, you know, but yes, the short answer is residents, some residents would have to have an action to opt out of the program. Reminder, if they did not, you know, they didn't get the letter, they're still paying the exact same as ComEd rate, and they're still being billed by ComEd, but I want to answer that as yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
Point of clarification, so, for those residents, this is only for residents, right? Not businesses?
Small businesses, pretty much smaller than a McDonald's or a barber shop, would potentially be included as well, just based on the size. You can't figure out which is a home on a ComEd account, so it's pretty much the size of a building.
Trustee Lawrence, it's residents and very small businesses.
Yeah.
Very small commercial.
Okay. So, we send a letter out, and if someone doesn't act, they end up on the program, and is that even though they may have a contract with another organization, and what happens to that person if all of the sudden, their other supplier says, ah, cha-ching, you broke your contract with me, and I'm charging you anyway? And sometimes, those charges are phenomenal.
Yeah.
It's scary.
I'll just say this, one, by state law, I just want to reiterate this, by state law, residents have the ability to move without contracts after six months without any penalties, so, if someone fights you on that, give them my number, and we'll help them out. But two, those residents would not be included. Any resident that has made a previous decision other than ComEd, so if you are on solar, if you are on a different supplier, if you are on the hourly program, you will not be included. You will just get an informative letter.
Okay.
They can join the program if you want, but once again, no benefit to them because the savings won't be there, but those residents, by state law, guaranteed, will not be included.
Okay.
They will get a letter that informs them.
The, just to make, so, I don't have a problem, George, do we need to make a decision on which one, two, or three tonight?
Do we?
No. I'll come back in whenever, two, three weeks, and ask the same question, but yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing needed tonight.
I'd prefer that, because I just want to make sure that it's clear in everybody's mind. Your average customer ought to be utterly indifferent as to where those electrons are coming from.
Correct.
Right? Could be a solar farm, Western Illinois, could be, you know, somewhere on the grid, there's a nuke, or there's a gas plant, or there's a coal plant. So, this is utterly, utterly invisible to the customer.
Correct. It doesn't change your service at all. The way we say it, a green electron, it's just like the, a water going down, a drop of water going down, you know, it just finds its lowest point. Doesn't mean it's going to Orland Park.
And because of what's going on in the energy markets, there is no savings to the customers from either one of these.
No, I wish there was more than anything, but correct. Correct.
And then, this is a way for people to say, yes, my town is contributing to the use of renewable energy, and the George's point, if the village of Orland Park is an entity, receives the 30 grand or the 60 grand, it would then be up to this board to spend that 60 grand wisely on behalf of the residents, like investing in our own energy efficiency to cut future expenses.
Two, also to be clear, you don't have to spend on renewably-friendly programs. I was just at Crest Hill, and they spent on their Winterfest. You know, it doesn't have to be on renewable friendly, but that's for the board and the staff to decide.
Yeah. So, I don't have a problem with the, with the program overall, right? Because, you know, the production of energy is, I want to say it's a commodity market, it's certainly not a commodity, but this is not what you're asking us today.
Correct.
So, George, I mean, I guess then, unless anybody in the board is starting to sleep jacks, why don't you come back in a couple of weeks, have to get through the other thing, and let's settle on this in terms of the option.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I'd like to make sure that we're doing additional research. Being, coming from the electric energy industry, I have some understanding of how these agreements work and the underlying issues with them.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not entirely convinced. I say that only because when you use Commonwealth Edison as your electric supplier, so, we all use them as our wires company, your electric delivery company, as an electric supplier, ComEd goes to the market and goes for an auction. An independent agency goes out into the market to buy electricity for Commonwealth Edison's customers who choose to get their supply from ComEd. I have a hard time understanding who else is bigger than Commonwealth Edison in a auction purchaser position. So, it's just, I would just like us to do more research to make sure we thoroughly understand what the offer is, because there's hardly anything here. And, who's going to make money? He's going to make money. His people are, so, somewhere in there, there's something else going on, and I think we need to thoroughly understand that.
Yeah, and.
I don't, I don't know what it is.
Yep.
Because that is not my expertise, but I'd like to know what it is.
So, I've been dealing, Adam, Adam's father, David, when he started in this, when I was in another community, we were one of the first communities, so, I got to know everything about this, this program. The, so, what is happening, many, many years ago, what happened was, the ComEd, like you said, the ComEd does not produce energy. Everyone thinks, they don't make electricity anymore. They are, they, they just get it from point A to point B. That's, that's how they make their money. So, once the energy market deregulated, right, ComEd had to sell off its nukes, and that's what we, how we got Constellation and Exelon and all of the other stuff. Once that happened, there was that kind of interim period where ComEd's rates were, I should say, the, the energy supply rates were at a certain rate, and then, if you went out to the market, you were getting it at a lower rate. So, when this first started, these aggregation programs, the cost savings to residents were incredible. They, you know, there were hundreds of dollars per year.
Exactly. And that's because there was supply in excess of demand. Today, do we think that supply is in excess of demand, but the way it was some years ago? That's my only concern, especially with AI and data centers. I just.
I agree. So, the program has switched now. It is no longer about a savings to residents. What is happening is, an energy company, or a supplier, MC Squared, now is saying, we guarantee you the ComEd supply rate, that, like you said, that supply rate is determined by a one-person operation in Springfield who goes out and does the bids for all electricity. So, they're going to guarantee you the same supply rate. The only benefit for going to MC Squared is one of these three things. So, they're not saying you're going to, they're going to save you money. They're not. But they're going to give you one of these three things.
Yep.
So, somehow or other, MC Squared is getting power from somewhere, getting a commitment for power and delivering energy at a cost lower than the biggest buyer, ComEd being, buying on behalf of others.
They're matching it. They're not, they're not producing anything lower, but they're matching the.
No, they have to, okay, so, they can't stay in business and give us $30,000 or $60,000 a year.
This is becoming a very detailed conversation as a public meeting, so, we're going to, you're going to come back in a couple of weeks.
I'll send a lengthy email. I'll give you my card, and maybe we can connect offline.
And what I'd like you and George and Deana to do is have a detailed conversation on this one, and then, bring us back the summary, because I think with Deana's background, excuse me, Trustee Lawrence, the board being forgiving. Excuse me, trustee Lawrence, the board being forgiving.
All good.
She has a deep background in this stuff, so I want to take advantage of that expertise. And then I will also, other board members will, sure, have some detailed questions about where you think the energy markets are going?
It's a million-dollar question.
Because, you know, demand on the available electricity has soared, but it's soaring for a reason that may solve how much it's soaring in demand in terms of AI could uncork literally new physics in the next five years and fundamentally change the energy markets, which is why I'm deeply skeptical of a contract that reaches this length, because I think we're on the cusp of a hockey stick in productivity from an individual solar panel, let alone small nuclear reactors. So there's a lot of complexities there, so we're going to punt this for two weeks.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any last questions?
No. Thank you. All right, George, you have your direction?
Yes, we will have NYMEC go out to bid on the, on this municipal aggregation component. We will put it on a future agenda. And before that, trustee Lawrence will make a, a meeting, will schedule a meeting to kind of go through all of the nuts and bolts here.
Good questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment on items relevant to village business.
Mr. Henry? So Mike, if you could introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
My name is Michael Henry. Obviously, I've done a lot of digging and known for Freedom of Information, and we called a lot of names. In the process, a lot of it is about legal fees and the rest. Wasn't wild that political donations were made, why millions of dollars of taxpayer money is being spent. Through digging, there is no records or anything else. The village of Orland Park filed a lawsuit against the state of Illinois. In that lawsuit, you had individual residents, Tom McMullen, Greg Booban, and Joe Solik. Yet there is no agreement with them, no billing agreement or anything else. But somehow miraculously, the village of Orland Park was bailed by Kleintorpe and Jenkins to pay their portions of the lawsuit. There is no records of this, no board meetings telling the public that money's going to be spent or anything else. What we did find out in some of the Freedom of Information is, when we had a sham meeting to approve this, the bills showed that Kleintorpe and Jenkins had been working on it for two months. So how did it get done? How did the taxpayers pay for Solik and everybody else's legal fees? And what happened to the money? And every time I tried to investigate billing from Kleintorpe and Jenkins, if you look at the eight Freedom of Information I filed, I got different billing statements for each one. When I questioned about why Kleintorpe and Jenkins, Dennis Walsh, billed thousands of dollars before anything that was specifically done to this, that bill miraculously disappeared. Guess what? It was Kleintorpe and Jenkins reviewing everything of my Freedom of Information. I ran into things like, oh, attorney-client privilege, this was discussed, you can't have that, you can't have the rest. The spending at Kleintorpe and Jenkins on one side, and the $100,000 of donations given to the party that was in power at that time stinks of fraud. And I think that we really need to have somebody sit down and audit the Kleintorpe and Jenkins bills. And I'll tell you right now, as we mentioned AI, I right now, for Kleintorpe and Jenkins, the people who filed the Joe Lamargo lawsuit and the rest, we're running a massive comparison. And miraculously, the individual plaintiffs in that case, somehow, right now, with over 1,000 pages done, it says that those things were ghosts written by Kleintorpe and Jenkins, which means the village paid private individuals legal suits. That includes Keith Pecow and trustee William Healy. They were ghosts written by Kleintorpe and Jenkins, and then just submitted by their attorneys, which means we fed more than thousands of dollars of legal fees for private individuals again. But every time I tried to audit numbers with Kleintorpe and Jenkins, I got, doesn't exist, not there. I've got receipts that say that, hey, the first bill was $100,000. Then three months later, I got additional bills that said we spent $230,000 more. But the last Freedom of Information act, so that says 330,000. Now, the last one I asked right before the election, they claimed it was $100,000, and all those bills were missing.
Sorry, I just wanted you to wrap up, the three minutes is up, but we'll have someone reach out to you from the village. Thank you. Is there any other folks who've signed in?
No.
Okay. Motion to adjourn the committee of the whole?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leeflad?
I make a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
Second.
So motion, the second, call her all, please.
Trustee Leeflad?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Okay, we are now adjourned at 7:27.
We'll call the board meeting to order in just a couple of minutes.